Good afternoon and welcome to the interviews for HR Director, City Council for HR Director, Housing Authority Board, and Civic Design Committee. And Madam Clerk, we read the title of the first committee, which is Housing Authority.
Bill 1220, Resolution Appointing Chief of Staff Jake Wheatley Jr. as a member of the Housing Authority Board of Directors for a term to expire March 26, 2025.
Thank you. And can we have Chief of Staff Wheatley come to the table? Anywhere here, anywhere you feel comfortable there. But make sure you bring the mic close to you and you can chat as you want. And then just introduce yourself to the public.
Sure. Jake Wheatley, Chief of Staff, to Mayor Gannon.
Thank you. And we're joined by Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, and I anticipate others will join us. Are there any others online? I can't see from here. No others online at this moment, but they're probably watching in the back of their offices. And so you're going to be appointed to the Housing Authority Board, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilwomen. Do you want to say a few words first?
Well, first of all, thank you for having me here. And I think, as you know, the mayor is very committed to trying to make sure our housing authority is very responsive to our citizens, especially those citizens who live and reside in those communities. And so hopefully, if you all would so be it, put me on that board, we would love to try to help continue that process to make sure those citizens get the type of housing that they deserve.
Thank you. And Councilwoman, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for your willingness to serve yet in yet another capacity for the city. I guess my main question is, from your experience, having worked in the various positions that you have, do you have thoughts on the way that our City of Pittsburgh Housing Authority can improve in the sort of backlog, I guess, for lack of a better term, when it comes to the acceptance of vouchers, Section 8 vouchers, where we have people who get on the list, they qualify, and then there's, they're sort of on the waiting list for housing open up for years and years and years? Do you see, I know that there's not going to be one, one answer, it's probably going to be multiple answers to get at that, but from your vantage point, do you see a way that we can start to work at getting, you know, working more collaboratively with residential property owners to allow them to feel like there's a real working relationship with the Housing Authority and ensuring that people are getting off the waiting list a lot more quickly?
Yeah, I think you kind of answered the question, right? We want to develop and deepen our partnership. Certainly, the county has shown a way of how to process this a little bit better. I think having the willingness at the board level with our staff to kind of work and find best practices to try to improve our efficiencies in that regard, and just clean up some of the processes that I think are there. Again, not being on the board is hard to kind of speak from an external perspective, but I think once I get on there and work with the staff to try to understand what are some of those problems, but to process it a little quicker, because again, we have a real challenge in our community, and people need affordable, safe spaces to live, and this is a way for us to kind of process that. And if there's any bureaucracy that's preventing that from happening, cleaning that up.
A real big priority for me will be making sure that we have partnerships in well-resourced, and when I say well-resourced, I mean like access to public transit, access to walkable communities, which exist in a lot of our communities, but in District 8, that's like Shady Side, that's Squirrel Hell, that's Point Breeze. Like, I want, I want to see more partnership with property owner, rental property owners there, and to build the relationships there, and to build the trust there, so that we can see more of these residential properties accepting, you know, accepting vouchers or all sorts of payment in communities all over the city.
And I know I would be very willing to sit with you, talk with you, and any of your folk, property owners in your district and any other districts, to find out ways that we can work together better.
Thank you. We'll call the show by Councilwoman Strasburger. Anything you have to add?
Yeah, sure. Apologies for being late. Yeah, I actually had some of the same concerns as Councilwoman Strasburger. I too would also like to see, essentially, when it comes to landlords who are even just curious, right, about entering into the voucher program, the Section 8 program. I mean, it would be really great if there was even some type of a hotline where it's like, that call, that call is answered right away, and someone is sent out to that property right away, sort of to make them feel like, from just sort of a customer service perspective, that it's like, oh, this is, oh, this is going to be good, because as a landlord, especially small landlords, right, who are just sort of private individuals who may own one or two houses, which we have a lot of that in Pittsburgh, I know there's a lot of folks like that in my district, that, that sort of user friendly, you know, because collecting rent is one of the hardest things about being a landlord, and that's what's so great about this program, right, is that the rent, that's the hardest part, and it's taken care of. So, you know, making sure, getting up to that point that it's just, you know, sort of, if they're, if, I feel that if they're pleasantly surprised by how quickly somebody comes over and checks out their house and helps them figure out what they need to do to get it in order. And then, of course, on the flip side is the enforcement, you know, once you are getting, you know, getting those funds to make sure that your house is maintained in a safe, a way that's safe, not only for the tenants, but for everybody, right, in the whole neighborhood, that's obviously important as well. And another thing too, that, and this is maybe a little bit on the side, but it would be great, I would love to see the Housing Authority partnering in the larger buildings, right, like, I'm thinking specifically like the high-rises in Glen Hazel, and we're starting to do this a little bit, but partnering with local groups, because there's lots of sort of green spaces around, and it would be great to see those being used for, I don't know, community gardens and pathways and things like that. I feel like there's an opportunity there.
Sure, sure. Again, I don't want to overpromise and not be able to deliver, but I think one of the things that the mayor has been talking very much about is what's the relationship like with our partners who are managers of large public housing or small public housing? There's a responsibility, there's a responsibility that the city has, that the Housing Authority has, and then that the property owner has as it relates to servicing our residents in a humane manner. And so all of what you said, I think, are things that we've been thinking about and trying to figure out how we do it. I know the mayor has been having several conversations, several conversations with Director Binion, and we plan to really try to investigate some of these properties and really try to figure out what's the role that we play in trying to make sure they're safe and humane, and what's the role that these owners play in making them safe and humane, and then what are some opportunities for us to make them look, beautify them in a way that makes them feel and look in a certain manner of security.
Yeah, absolutely, because I think too, and I mean, it's a shame to have to talk about housing in this way, but I think it's a reality, especially for smaller landlords, is when you have things like Airbnb and all these that are so easy, right, it's so easy to get, it's all online, and it's like in and out, whatever, you know, I feel like as the city, as the housing authority, we really need to up our game to make the, you know, make this the attractive option for landlords, right, across the city, and I think, I think that we can do that.
Yeah. And especially if we're building out places where we can make it more efficient in an effective way to get them their money and get them a part of our program, we do our part, and then we can make sure that they do their part.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, do you have any questions?
I really didn't have any questions. I just wanted to offer my full support to this guy. He served our country, he now serves our city. No matter committee they put you on, I support you, all right?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And for me, I just, this is actually one of the authorities that we actually have, somebody from the West End on, so I'm happy for that one, Alex LaRocco, and he's an immigrant, a veteran, gay, his husband works for Domi, so I just want to say he hits all the buttons, and he's really, really great to have on there from our area. But for me, I just, I think that there's a lot of conversations that have to happen with housing in general in the City of Pittsburgh. I think we should actually have a housing department, not all these separate efforts and separate initiatives. I think it would be great to have a Department of Housing to address all the sorts of issues, because in our area, we have an overabundance of housing, affordable housing, and a lot of it's uninhabitable. So it's how do you get to that point where you're getting those homes fixed up? So I'm not going to belabor the point, because I can, but I'm looking forward to working with you on some of this stuff, including your role in the Housing Authority and in the mayor's office. With that said, if there's no-
Madam Clerk, I did have one thing I'd like to ask.
No, it's too late, you missed your chance. No, just kidding, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
So I was just talking to Councilwoman Warwick a little while ago, and I understand there's a shortage, I mean, there's more vouchers than places available. Is that right? And how big is that shortage? Does anybody here know as to, like, how many vouchers do we have out there that we can't provide housing for?
I don't know the number, but I do know that the program over the years, it's not as an advantage for a landlord to become a part of the process. I think that's why the county has that new initiative to try to incentivize more property owners to sign up, mainly, again, some of it is you get caught up into the bureaucracy, you can't get people to come out to inspect this place, you can't get, you know, payments processed in a timely manner, so all these things need to be a part of what we kind of figure out together, and how we can make this, because it will help us with our affordable housing challenge, because once we get the Housing Authority and its apparatus optimizing all of its resources, I think we'll be able to help with some of these, these other problems and challenges we see in our community.
Yeah, like cutting through the red tape, basically. I mean, myself, as a contractor, I don't do work for the city just because, just, you know, all the hoops I have to jump through and everything for every job, or the county for that matter, but it sounds like that's kind of what you're saying about housing, to eliminate whatever-
At least try to make it more efficient and more streamlined, you know, and more, you know, I don't know how much of it, again, I don't want to say what's going on in the Housing Authority with their staffing and their abilities to process these things, but I do know there are some lessons we can learn from some of our partners who have done it in a more effective manner.
Okay, that was it for me.
Thank you, Councilman. And we're also joined by Councilwoman Gross, who's online, and she does have some questions.
Hi, Chief Wheatley, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to join you all in person. First of all, thank you. As everyone mentioned, I'm sure we're looking forward to working with you at the Housing Authority. I wanted to follow up on a question that I asked the Housing Authority during budget season, when they were doing their budget hearing in front of City Council last December. I asked about the amount of housing stock, right, the actual buildings that Housing Authority owns. We know that it's getting more and more expensive to build new housing. Councilmembers have talked about it many times, it can be over $400,000 per unit to build new housing. And for years, the Housing Authority, because of federal regulations, has been, you know, working with private owners to build new housing. But we're still below our threshold of the federal limit of being able to completely own 100% housing. So we talked at that budget hearing about the possibility of the Housing Authority purchasing existing multi-units to increase its inventory of wholly owned, 100% publicly owned buildings, and I'm wondering if you have thoughts and if you'd be supportive of purchasing multi-units?
Yeah, so we've been, our Chief Economic Development Officer, as you know, has really been trying to build the relationship with the Housing Authority, talking about ways that we could leverage what we have from the URA and what they have available for financing some of these things. I think there is a plan that's been discussed with you all about potentially going to market and doing more bonding, and so we have some thoughts, but I think there's some continual conversation that needs to happen between the Housing Authority and our URA to try to work out what that looks like, how that comes about, but I think all of those things are on the table for us to try to figure out, you know, because I think from what I've know and have heard from the Housing Authority, they're open to this, this conversation to be had.
I'm glad to hear it. I mean, for just looking at multi-list like every citizen can do, if you look at, you know, small to medium-sized multi-units across the city, you know, buildings that maybe have 40 units, 50 units in them, they're for sale for, you know, $250,000 a unit, and some of them appear, you know, I haven't done walkthroughs myself as a buyer, but they appear to be in decent shape. So compared to the cost of building new, if we really need to add our capacity, I think, of actually publicly owned properties to make a dent in this problem, so, and it's faster too, so it's like, not only cheaper, but, you know, these would be units, you don't have to wait two and a half years to get the financing together, to get the, you know, permitting approvals together, and then to do the actual construction, they're already existing buildings. So I look forward to continuing that conversation.
I think that's the philosophy we come to the table. I mean, we're willing to explore all possibilities, we'll find out what's doable, but we're willing to explore all of the possibilities.
Secondly, I do have another favorite topic that may or may not be appropriate for the Housing Authority, but I have brought it up to our partners at that local housing and urban development agency, which is, you know, I have legislation in front of the administration to research limited equity housing co-ops, and tenant ownership is something I think that can really help us build wealth, and to do it in a way that isn't, you know, needing to save up a giant down payment in order to buy a single-family home. So I would love to hear your thoughts on kind of tenant ownership and control of properties, and if you could pull on that at the Housing Authority as well.
You always bring up a nice, interesting question. Again, I'm going to go back to my earlier answer. I'm personally open to exploring all types of conversations around ways to improve access to quality, affordable, safe spaces for people, and tenant ownership, is that something that council still wills us to explore? I know as an administration, we'll be open to it, willing in exploring it.
Appreciate that, Chief. Thank you. I look forward to working with you at the Housing Authority.
No doubt.
Thank you. And this will be on Tuesday's agenda for confirmation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know you have an appointment, someone to get you out of here before another question, round of questions comes up. Thank you. And then we'll move on to our next, which seems like there's a whole audience for our director-
She's got to backup.
The Director of Human Resources interview. Paula Kellerman, please come to the table, please.
Bill 1221, Resolution Appointing Paula Kellerman as a Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Director. We know this is an exciting moment, I just talked to you a few minutes ago, but look, I think you're the only person that came with a whole group behind you like that, so. So with that said, is there a few things you'd like to say before we start interviews?
Just want to say a good afternoon, and thank you all for this opportunity, and I look forward to speaking with you.
And we'll begin with Councilman Coghill.
Well, first, I want to say congratulations, maybe pre, you know, maybe early for that, but you'll have my support. I know you know what you're doing, I know your whole cast there, they're all great, so I have complete confidence in you, like Jake Wheatley, you know, I have complete confidence in your appointment, and I don't really have any questions beyond that.
Thank you.
Easy, huh?
Mostly thank you for not asking questions.
Yes.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. I, you know, you have, you have my full support as well. I know that you've been in many roles that have prepared you for this role, and it's always, it's always, I don't want to say convenient, but it's always helpful to us to know that there's someone coming from this department, this specific department, where you know how it, you know, it might differ from other departments or other cities, human resources departments, right, you know this one inside and out, and that's incredibly gratifying for us to, you know, it's comforting for us to know that you are coming fully prepared. I don't know if there's anything that you see that you would like to, you know, if the answer is no, that's also okay, but is there anything in the department that you would like to change, go in a slightly different direction from what you've seen, that you would, that you would shake up a little bit in this new role, or would you sort of stay the course? Either answer's okay, I'm not going to place a value judgment on either, I'm just honestly curious to see what your thoughts are here.
Well, first, thank you very much for your support and for your comments, I appreciate that. There are many things I have in the back of my mind that I would like to change or progress forward. A lot of them I probably don't want to reveal yet, to be honest, however, some things that I can share with you is, you know, a lot of times we talk about recruitment and welcoming people in the door and making it a safe and psychologically safe, comfortable place for employees to work and for, to welcome people, and I think that personally, we can do a lot better for the employees that we currently have in the city, to make them feel more welcome, make them feel valued and appreciated and know their worth, and with that, some items that I'm looking to initiate would be along the lines of employee, employment, excuse me, employee engagement and mentorship programs. So just to have, so employees have regular feedback from supervisors and from people that matter in their employment, to let them know both things that they need to work on, but also things that they are doing well, and the value that they contribute to their specific department and the city as a whole.
I'd love to hear that, because I know that there's, in really strong work cultures, there's a culture of peer accolades, rather than, you know, just the manager saying, "Great job," and then the person might feel like, "Well, I'm doing such a great job, won't you pay me more?" Right, like that kind of thing, but peer-to-peer accolades or peer mentorship is really, which is not exactly what you're saying, but the idea of mentorship and sort of making sure that people know that they're hearing the positive all the time, as well as the critical feedback is, really resonates with me, so thank you for that. And, you know, I hear what you're saying about creating a psychologically and otherwise safe environment for workers, because they're your greatest asset, and it's not just some departments or others, it's every department that can't afford to lose people, because we literally can't afford to hire those, that same level of people back right now for, you know, given this market that we're in, at the same rate, you know, we won't get that same quality. So to be able to retain our staff across the board and make sure every manager is well-trained as a staff manager is so important, so I'm really glad you're thinking about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick, do you have any questions?
Well, first of all, I do just want to say, the, as a new employee of the city, the staff at HR has been wonderful, just very helpful and kind and, you know, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, congratulations on that, on becoming Director of the Superstaff. I guess I do have one question that sort of, I mean, this is me kind of plugging my own thing, but it is an HR question, is right now, when it comes, it's about benefits, right now, with the parking benefit, it's actually less expensive for people, you know, for folks working for the city to drive to work and park than it is for them to take the bus. And so my office, and I know others, are interested in a free monthly bus pass program for city employees. That's something I would love to see, to incentivize, you know, taking, using public transit, and it would also help public transit, you know, expand usage, et cetera, but if the HR department would have the bandwidth to explore possible grants for something like that, because I know that there are grants out there for, you know, for businesses, right, but, you know, public sector and private sector, to encourage public transportation usage among their employees.
Yes, no, I think that's a great idea, and there has been discussion, you aren't the first person who has brought up looking at free bus passes for employees, so that is definitely something we can look into, grant funding for that.
Thank you. First of all, the most important question, where do you live?
I knew this was coming.
Where do you live?
District 2, right?
District 2.
Thank goodness.
You're hired. You're approved. No, just, seriously, I, I've known you for a long time, and I know you do amazing work, I know that you take pride in your work and treat people so kindly, and you're so good to everybody.
Thank you.
With that said, I think when we talk about employees and treating them well, I mean, I think sometimes we send a message when we treat employees, when we fire somebody who's, or try to push them out when they've been here for 30, 40, 45 years, and don't value their knowledge that they bring to the table, and I'd like to know how, not only are you attracting new, younger people and new talent, which I hope, part of that is, I'd like to discuss with you, is you met a young man in my office today, and he has a long history, and he, but he's never had an arrest, even though, you know, he could have gotten in a lot, gone down a really slippery slope, but he doesn't have a resume, you know, things like that, he's 26 years old, so I don't know if we're, you know, trying to remove those kinds of obstacles, driver's license, resumes, mentoring program. I talked to the Public Safety Director today, I'm encouraged by some of the things he had to say, and I think he's doing a good job, but I just wanted to know what your thoughts are on that area. How are you going to, first, how are you going to help attract new, younger talent to Pittsburgh, at the same time valuing and holding on to those with some institutional knowledge? In your, in your role, because sometimes it's the Director that needs to know, you know, how serious we take those things too, and I think council's ready to send some messages, so could you talk to us a little bit?
Sure. So attracting new, young talent, I do think that goes back a little bit to what I shared about mentorship programs, employee engagement, all, when we can provide, you know, some flexible schedules, just different items that are attractive to young, the young workforce, right? And the reason I bring those areas up again is because when we are treating our employees well, that word spreads, and it's rebranding ourselves altogether as a city. So I think those items, and also where we're going to recruit and the way we're recruiting, which we've been having a lot of discussions regarding that, and ways to, to better reach and impact the younger, the younger candidates and talent.
And so with that said, I'm going to say, I think our police officers are feeling a little devalued, I think some of our DPW workers are feeling devalued, there's a lot, I mean, I think it's just the climate, to be honest with you, in some cases, but there's some reality to some, the ways some people are being treated, so I think it's something we have to all review ourselves and how we're treating employees, and realize it's, these are challenging jobs and challenging times, and we just need to do a little bit better in that area, I think, across the board, every one of us, including council. I mean, there's things that we can do to make things a little bit different too, and so I think we're going to have to start exercising some of those, those options. But I also think that sometimes when we're trying to create like more of a diverse workforce, sometimes we swing the pendulum too far, and then we start discriminating in another way. How do you balance that, is what I want to know? How can you balance that, to make sure we're attracting young people, promoting a diverse workforce, and yet at the same time not devaluing and not, you know, promoting somebody who maybe is not as diverse as somebody else, as another candidate?
Well, I think we have to-
How do you balance it, that's all?
I think we have to look at each candidate, right? So each position we're hiring for, yes, diversity, equity, inclusion is at the forefront, as I feel that it should be, again, within the departments as well as within our recruiting. However, we are also looking at what candidates bring to the table regardless of their background, their ethnicity and everything, again, keeping that at the forefront, but we're looking at the whole candidate and the value that they bring for that specific position. So I think just being intentional about our recruiting, intentional with our, when we're screening applications, and when we're working with departments, with interviewing, that we're looking at the whole candidate period.
And I think, I think, I actually think we do a good job in the city, I think we were hiring a lot of- we're hiring a lot of talented people, a lot of diversity, and yet still holding on to some people that have a lot of institutional knowledge and may not fit the description of a diverse workforce, but I think we, I think we do, I think we're doing okay, it's hard, I think, and I think it's a hard time, but I know people always are asking us those questions, so I want to make sure the public hears us asking those questions when you come to the table, that there is a balance. With that said, this will be on, for approval on Tuesday for, for the final vote, and we're looking forward to confirming you, so, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you for bringing your big fan base here.
Entourage, yeah.
I don't think we've ever seen anybody have this many people in the background.
I was afraid not to approve. Bye, Paula.
Thank you, with that said, that's it, we have the Civic Design Committee with Gerard Winston.
Bill 1184, resolution appointing Gerard Winston as a member of the Civic Design Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission, for a term concurrent with that of the mayor.
Thank you, good afternoon, thanks for waiting.
Good afternoon.
Could you, do you want to say a little bit about yourself?
Sure, um, yeah, I wasn't sure how much, you know, the folks here...
So, just give a little synopsis about whatever, whatever did you like to say, that's all.
Okay, well, thanks for having me. So, my name is Gerard Winston, I'm actually an architect licensed in PA, and my experience has been 20 years or so of that, doing work for and with the city at times, and in private practice, ranging from everything related to housing, to hospitality, to commercial, to, you know, a large breadth of, of sort of project experience, so I think that's sort of my, my tandem or my connection to the, the design and built environment.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilwoman Warwick this time, and then go around this way.
Yeah, sure, so, thanks for being here. I guess just as sort of an opener, how do you see your role on this committee?
Well, good question, I mean, I think, you know, just as I stated, my experience over the last 20 years, just working within the built environment, so it gives me a little, you know, I think my, my expertise in that realm lends itself to sort of assisting, I think that's, that's kind of my position on it, it's not necessarily that, you know, I'm sort of bringing a different point of view to the commission, where there might be some other levels of experience that might differ from mine, but since my experience has been such that it's been directly related to architecture and construction and building, and, you know, that, that's sort of my tandem to it, and my, my sort of lens that I'll be sort of looking, you know, or reviewing projects through, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further questions?
I don't think so, yeah.
That's it, okay, thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, did you have?
Thank you, that was the main question I had in the last interview session that we had, we got into some really interesting conversations around the, I think it was, I think we did focus a little bit more on, on art than we did on civic design, but on public art, but the two were intertwined, right, and it is part of the same, the same commission. And, you know, the, the difference between imposing something on a community and really kind of approaching and appreciating what's already in the community and working from that ground up, and I wonder if there's anything that you'd like to add, because it was just, it was a vibrant conversation with about four other candidates here, if there's anything that you kind of from that perspective would like to add to that conversation?
Yeah, that's interesting, yeah, so I think my, my take on it is this, and I've been in that position where I've had to present and, and sort of, you know, convince a group, you know, to, as to what I was doing was correct or was appropriate for a certain situation or a certain place, so I do have some sensitivity around that, and I would say my position on that is, is just so that, you know, when, when projects are presented, it's more the commission's role to help that individual or group, you know, you know, better the project and make it such that it is appropriate for the location, or what the surroundings are, what the context is that it will, you know, live within. So, you know, I think historically there has been a sense that some, some of those approaches were more forceful than necessary, so I think my position is just, you know, listening and providing input to hopefully improve and make whatever project is being reviewed, you know, I hate to say appropriate, but without going too far in one direction or the other, you know, for, for the, the location or place or community.
Case by case, and that's all you can do, right? Because it's...
It's going to vary.
Yeah, and right, it's, there's this, this pull between the subjective nature of what is art, or what is a nice design of a building, versus, you know, the need for growth in some areas, the need for more housing in some areas, the need for, you know, taller buildings in some areas to house the next innovation district, or whatever it might be, so. And balancing that with not turning, I think it was Councilwoman Warwick who said this last time, not turning kind of Pittsburgh into cookie cutter, you know, any city USA, right, as well as the historic nature of some of our, some of our districts or some of our neighborhoods. So, it's a tough, it's a tough balance, but I think approaching it as what is, what is appropriate for that particular project is interesting.
Yeah, no, I think, also, I mean, given, you know, the, you know, being a cookie cutter approach, I think just the fact that we're reviewing the sort of installation or the integration of art into, or into spaces or places, you know, lends itself to naturally not making it cookie cutter, you know? So, yeah, I think, you know, case by case basis, and looking at things, you know, subjectively as possible is just, you know, naturally the way to go, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman, do you have any questions?
Welcome, Jared.
Thank you.
Yeah, impressive resume, you're an architect.
I try to be one.
Yeah, I'm a wannabe architect, you know, but...
Did it for a little while.
No, I love working with space and trying to get the most out of space, which is intriguing to me, and I practice that in my own little projects, but nobody would actually hire me as an architect, I would tell you, so. So, I think that's a great experience to bring to the table with this, and are you originally from Pittsburgh?
No, you know, it's funny, because I'm not originally from Pittsburgh, I'm originally from the DC Baltimore area, but I've been here for so long, when people ask me, I start to say I'm from Pittsburgh, so I think I've been here long enough, yeah.
Very, very, yeah, the, the fact that I couldn't differentiate tells you, you've already, you've migrated and probably picked up some of our bad accents here and nothing else at this point.
Yeah, so I've had my share of pierogies, I'm trying to wean myself off of that.
Yeah, yeah, no, Jared, I just came to meet you, and yeah, you'll have my support, and I think your experience and your, your resume speaks for itself, so.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I have no questions, I just heard everyone's questions. Thank you for your willingness to serve, and your appointment confirmation will be on Tuesday's standard committee, or stand, stand, a regular committee meeting.
Thank you.
Regular, I can't, I said three different things.
Regular council meeting, right?
Your regular council meeting.
Got it.
You can figure that out, you can serve, okay?
Warwick, you live in District Two.
Councilwoman, did you have something before?
Yeah, I did just have one, just, I just sort of thought of it now, is just in terms of civic design, and I, you don't, well, if you want to give your thoughts, or, but just something on, on the commission going forward, is sort of the utilitarian aspect of, of designs, and I think, I know this is, but I hear a lot, surprisingly a lot, about a lack of, for example, public restrooms in public spaces and things like that, or whether it's transit access, or, you know, all of the, which ultimately are part of the design, and oftentimes are either just left off altogether, or just kind of afterthoughts, you know, once a project is essentially complete.
So, my take on that, so, I mean, I think as an architect and, and being a designer for so long, I always have to straddle this line between functionality and aesthetics, right? So, I think in the civic realm, it still holds true in the same regard, you know, whether it's a small space or a large space, or a public space or a private space, it still should be aesthetically pleasing and beautiful, right, at the same time functional and functional for as many people as possible, so I think it's not just a question of functionality, but I think also, to the greatest degree possible, one of equity, so it's, you know, functional from the standpoint of just being used for the purpose that it's designed for, but also functional for, you know, those who have impairments, or, you know, whether visual or physical, or whatever it may be. So, I think, you know, thinking holistically, I can't necessarily, you know, control so much what people are presenting, but maybe just proposing or asking the questions that might be appropriate for whatever projects are coming, you know, through the commission, so if there is, you know, a deficit or something that's glaring as being something that's missing, that might be something that we would just have to discuss with the, with those who are proposing these projects, so.
You good? Okay, with that said, we'll be up for final vote on Tuesday, and we're looking forward to confirming you on, on Tuesday. Thank you so much for your willingness to...
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, meetings adjourned, thank you, everyone.